Twenty. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Thank you for coming out and being with us here. If we would, could we stand and say the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Allen, would you lead us?
I will. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. For those that couldn't be with us tonight, we're still available by telephone if you want to call in during the citizen comment period. And if you're going to call in during the citizen comment period, our phone number is eight four four, eight four four, nine two zero zero. When you're prompted, you're going to enter the conference code three nine eight one four five, followed by the pound sign. You'll hear another prompt for question and answering has started. Press the star, followed by the number six. You'll be put into, you'll be asked by the speaker if you want to speak. If you do, press number one. You'll be put into the meeting and the moderator will come on shortly thereafter. And you can make your comment. When you make your comment, you're going to be limited to four minutes. Please keep your comments to four minutes. That brings us to agenda meeting number two, which is adopting the agenda meeting for tonight. During tonight's meeting, we've removed item number eight from the agenda. It will be placed on the November ninth, 2020 agenda. So will somebody make a motion to adopt the gen- agenda with item number eight removed?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Seder. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do we have any discussion on the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries five oh. That brings us to number three, which is consider the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you, lady and gentleman. Number four is kind of my favorite part of this anymore is matters from the city mayor. And during this time, we take, take a few minutes to recognize people that are doing well within city government. And this past month, we had a, or this past summer, we were given a, an award by Cardiograph Annual Conference. The city of Waynesboro was named one of six organizations across the nation to receive the Cardiograph High Performance Government Award. Mr. Shaw, did you want to fill us in on that?
Well, sure. That the Cardiograph is a software that the city of Waynesboro uses for asset management and work orders in the Public Works Division. And the award this year that we, we submitted had to do with our street sweeping program that we street sweep as a pollution control measure under our MS four program. And we are required to report the volume of dirt and grit and so forth that we remove from the street. And there's a calculation that apparently street debris is pretty uniform in its concentration of pollutions. And so you can calculate pollution load that is removed ultimately from the Chesapeake Bay, but from local streams and waters as well, based on volume. About two years ago, there was a special commission that studied street dirt or removal and suggested that a better way of tracking is by the road miles that are cleaned by the street sweeper. And so what we did was established within the Cardiograph system and our geographic information system, street layers by segments, and we have more than 1,100 individual segments of street, and how frequently each of those street sections are swept. And then that's all uploaded to the system and can be accessed on mobile devices in the street sweeper itself so that there's a real time tracking of the lane miles of street that are being swept. And so then it makes it easy to download that information and report back as required to the Department of Environmental Quality. And so doing it that way really reduced the man hours that had otherwise been required in what was a manual system of tracking where we were and then how much debris had been removed. So we have a real, a real time report that can go to the DEQ. And it also helps the supervisor in the streets division in terms of knowing where the street sweeper is and his schedule and route and so forth. And the street sweeper is periodically called off of his regular route if you have an accident or, you know, there's some sort of debris in the road, that sort of thing. So it allows them to return to that tracking. And so it's, it's really kind of an interesting project that those guys did. And for that, we were recognized. And we were in some good company. There were some big cities. The city of Pittsburgh was another award winner in our category. And so, and then I would, I would note too, for the council's benefit, that one of the things that improves the efficiency and effectiveness of our operation is the street sweeper itself. And I think some of the members of this council were here for an appropriation a couple of years ago for a pretty expensive piece of equipment. The street sweeper costs about $230,000. But it's what's called a regenerative air sweeper that basically it has these controlled blasts of air that go along and help remove grit and dirt from the roadway, and then it sucked up into a vacuum cleaner. And it's by far the most efficient device in that cat, you know, amongst street sweepers. And really not a lot of localities have those sweepers in, in, in use. So at any rate, that's a long winded way of saying it was, it was really kind of an interesting soft way of using the Cardiograph software and really did make our operation more efficient. And so we were recognized. I would point out, there were employees from the Public Works Division, Engineering Division, and Planning Department that participated. And if I could, Mr. Mayor, I'd call them by name if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I was going to do that, but go ahead.
So Logan Borer, Chris Garrison, Trafford McCray, Keith Paltz, Jennifer Allen Key, Curtis Rankin, and Tasha Ritchie were all the, the team that worked on this project.
And for those that haven't really noticed the, the machinery around town, these guys do a great job of cleaning the street. I thought it was just to keep the streets clean. But when they remove this grit, it also gives us credit towards other things in the environmental control board. So great operation, great people working there. And if you ever get to see the machine running, it's kind of a neat machine to watch running. I've got one more group of folks that I'd like to recognize tonight. They've been kind of behind the scenes during this whole COVID thing. And it's the, the panel we're seeing set up here, the city manager, his staff, Luke, Jim, Mr. McCormick, all of these folks have been working behind the scenes, day in, day out, keeping the wheels on the city rolling. And I want to thank you guys for the hard work you're doing and keep it up.
Thank you.
All right. This brings me to item number four, and that's matters for city, item number five. I gotta turn one more page. Item number five is matters for council members. Does anyone have anything they'd like to present tonight?
I've got a few things, Mr. Mayor. First thing is my typical constituent meetings in November. The first Tuesday, I will not be having constituent meeting because it is election day. So I'll not have anything that day. The second Tuesday, I've been trying to start having evening meetings to, for those folks that are working during the day and couldn't make the morning meetings. So that'll be in November the 10th at 7:00 PM. I'm going to say we're going to meet at the Constitution Park, although it may be dark and cold by then. So we'll see what happens. I'll bring a lantern and see what indoor space people are comfortable in. But we'll stay, we'll still try to meet at Constitution Park on that day. The next one is about election day. And just as a, a public service, we looked into it and a reminder for early in-person voting, still available down at the registrar's office in the Gorsuch Building. That'll be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of this week. And that is nine to one, and then two to five. And then Saturday, the 31st, this week, they are going to be open nine to five. So I guess they don't take a lunch on Saturday. And then that's the end of early in-person voting on election day, Tuesday, the third. It'll be the regular ward sites for regular voting activities. Ward A, Basic City United Methodist. Ward B, the Waynesboro Public Library. Ward C, Wayne Hills School. Ward D, Westminster Presbyterian Church. So they'll be back to their regular sites that they've been at before. So as a reminder, it is on the, the website, the city website you can get to as well. My last one, my coronavirus update. I try to do this at least once a month. If you've looked at the numbers in the Virginia Department of Health, our numbers are up both locally and across the state in the last couple of weeks here. There, there are lots of people, you can read lots of opinions about why that might be. But the reality is we're seeing some higher numbers. Our averages are up over the last two weeks. So a reminder that we need to take it seriously still. And that as people go indoors and spend more time indoors, we still have to be wearing masks and we still need to be social distanced so that we can protect each other and protect our community. Again, we are fortunate that our numbers are not real high still. We're not having the outbreaks that we've heard about in some other places in the nation. But we are seeing the numbers being slightly higher in a sustained way. So, you know, again, we got to keep it up, folks. So that's my update.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Haas Seder. Anyone else have anything?
Just got a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. The first is, I just want to extend my appreciation to Kira Johnson and a rebel rousing group of volunteers that pulled off a remarkable project over Waynesboro High School. I've had the, the privilege of serving on a committee with Kira and, and a group of interested parties through a small grant that we received through the Virginia Walkability Action Institute that helped facilitate the purchase of paint and otherwise. And I just want to thank Kira for her leadership and, and the community for leaning in on the first tactical urbanism projects. They're really, really cool. And then last, just to give a go for Virginia, we had a Go Virginia meeting last, last week. And in that meeting, we zoomed it again. We thought we might meet in person, but we did zoom again. And through that discussion and conversation, we advanced a recommendation to the Go Virginia Board in Richmond for the allocation of a little over a million dollars for a site enhancement application. And one of which will include the Shando Valley Industrial Park South Campus here in Waynesboro, which is, I think I'm calling that correctly.
Oh, the Outlet Village.
The Outlet Village, thank you. The Outlet Village site. I think of Shannon Village Drive. That's what got me. And so off of Shannon Village Drive, and what that will essentially do is consistent with Mr. Hitchens' comments earlier about tiering, it'll bring the potential, if awarded, the ability to bring that site from a tier three to a tier four site. So in terms of site readiness, it's really ready for prime time. And so looking forward to hopefully a successful word from, from our, the colleagues. You know, the Regenate application has been submitted. So looking forward to hearing some positive news for that to move that forward. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Terry. Any other comments? For those that haven't seen the, the project that Terry was talking about at the high school, it's really worth just driving up there and parking in the parking lot, walking out and taking a look at the intersection. They've put ice cream cones on the street there in front of the, the Klein's, wrenches in front of the, the repair facility. It's a great, great project and a great job. I agree with you on that. For those that haven't heard, the month of November is going to start our leaf pickup around the city. And the city will announce that on the website. They will post a schedule on which neighborhoods they're going to be in as they do it. But it looks like it's going to start around the November 3rd period and run the whole month. So be watching the, the bulletin boards and the papers and see when we're going to be in your neighborhood to pick up leaves. All right. That brings us up to item number six. And item number six is to hold a public hearing to consider introducing an ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Columbia Gas of Virginia Incorporated and other businesses to construct and operate a natural gas transmission and distribution system in the city of Waynesboro. I understand that this invitation for bidders was advertised, has run, and has not received any other bidders other than Columbia Gas of Virginia. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city enters into franchise agreements with private utility companies to allow the installation and maintenance of their assets within the city-owned right of ways. And we have franchise agreements with Columbia Gas of Virginia, Virginia Dominion Power, and the various telecommunications providers in the community. Columbia Gas of Virginia currently maintains underground mains and services to residents and businesses as well as above-ground mechanical devices in the city of Waynesboro. The current Columbia Gas franchise agreement was adopted in December of 1991 and is due for renewal by the city council. In addition, the Columbia Gas representatives have indicated that their company will continue to pursue significant capital maintenance projects through at least 2020 here in the city and propose, and the proposed revised agreement would address issues related to those types of activities. The Virginia State Corporation Commission regulates public utility corporations, including Columbia Gas of Virginia, as to matters of rates and billing, general operation and service standards. Consumer complaints are handled by the SEC. So this franchise agreement with the city is confined to activities that take place within the public right of way. The agreement is intended to ensure that work on the part of the Columbia Gas of Virginia Company is conducted safely and in a manner that's coordinated with the city's own activities and uses in the right-of-way area. The agreement ensures that protection and/or restoration of city-owned assets and protects the city against claims of damage that may arise due to the actions of others. This new agreement is notable for the requirement that a bond is posted to cover certain construction activities in the right-of-way, and also the city is listed as an additional insured on Columbia Gas's insurance liability policies here in the, in the city. In addition, the updated agreement is meant to minimize disruption for residents and businesses and ensure the prompt restoration of city-owned facilities such as street pavement and sidewalks and that sort of thing. There are special provisions in this regard related to the downtown enterprise zone, and that is that there's a shorter period of time to repair the city's facilities after construction is completed. As the mayor has noted, Columbia Gas of Virginia is the sole bidder on this franchise. And we have received the, the required bid deposit as outlined in the agreement. And so we're now required to hold a public hearing on the franchise agreement. As is our custom, we typically allow that applicants, in this case, a franchise bidder, would speak at the public hearing. And we do have representatives of Columbia Gas of Virginia here with us this evening. Be glad to answer any questions council may have, but otherwise you're set to have, hold your public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Shaw? Okay. All right. Before I start the public hearing, let me give out the phone number one more time if you want to participate in this public hearing. It's eight four four, eight four four, nine two zero zero. The access code is going to be three nine eight one four five, followed by the pound sign. You'll hear question and answer has started. Press star six. You'll be asked if you'd like to speak. When you hear that, press one. You'll hear the meeting going on, and when it's your turn to speak, the moderator will tell you it's your turn to speak. So with that, I open the public hearing. Anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
Anyone on the phone, Mr. McCormick?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I hereby close the public hea-
Mr. Mayor, before we close the hearing, we're officially under the Virginia Code required to ask if there's anyone present would like to submit a bid before you close the bid.
Okay. Is there anyone present at the public hearing that would like to submit a bid?
I believe this would be a good opportunity for one of the representatives from Columbia Gas.
Would either one of you like to speak? You would just say your name and your-
Well, my name is Terry Mason. I am the regional manager for Columbia Gas here in, oh, Kim.
It's easier to talk.
Yeah, but I just want to thank you, Mayor Henderson, and council members for taking the opportunity to consider this agreement. And we have a great relationship with the city and want to continue that on. And so we're here, myself and Terry Howard, who's our, our local leader for this area. He, he and I are here to represent Columbia Gas with any questions you might have for us or anything we can help you with. But thank you again for having us and considering this agreement.
Any questions? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Michelson, I didn't hear anybody else make a motion for bid?
Fine, we can close the bid.
Okay. All right, I hereby close this public hearing. All right. Is there a motion to introduce this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Terry. Are there any, or is there any discussion? Okay. This meeting will carry, this ordinance will carry over to our November 9th business meeting. We'll be considered at that time. Thank you, gentlemen, for your, your time tonight.
Thank you.
You too.
This brings us to item number seven. Item number seven is to consider an ordinance vacating the Etgrade Railroad crossing at Seventh Street near the intersection of Seventh Street and Commerce Avenue. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you noted, the council has introduced and seconded this ordinance, and it's been discussed previously. So this evening, the council is asked to vote on the ordinance. Southern Corridor Project delivers both transportation and economic benefit to the community. The road project itself carries a $2 million obligation on the part of the city. And for that, the city receives approximately a $17 million road facility that will receipt, relieve congestion at the town center at Rosser by providing alternate access to the town center and industrialized area on Shando Village Drive. Similarly, the road projects, project provides access to the today undeveloped industrial property owned by the city. To realize the economic return on this investment or the development of the property, I made it note, and we note that it requires an estimated $11.8 million of utility work both on the site and off the site to connect that service to both the water and sewer systems, existing water and sewer systems of the city. These projects or these costs are identified in the adopted CIP, but they are noted as at this time unplanned and unfunded. Mr. Hitchens, our Director of Economic Development, also notes that approximately $10 million in grading is anticipated to elevate the site from a tier four to a tier five status according to the Virginia Department of Economic Development, or the Virginia Economic Development Pro- Pro- excuse me, BEDP. But at this time, we simply note those known expenses and are not recommending those expenditures or the council undertake them. Mr. Hitchens previously shared that the full buildout, at full buildout, the park would deliver approximately $2.6 million in direct revenue to the city and 700 jobs with an annual, estimated annual payroll of $34 million. So again, I mentioned that just to provide additional economic and transportation context related to the closure of the railway. Mr. Jude Day has previously noted as well that the city didn't necessarily go looking for the opportunity or, or just the opportunity to close this crossing. That in pursuing the project, the railroad requires that in order to receive a permit for an at-grade crossing on our property, the railroad requires that we close three additional, or three crossings that currently exist. And this crossing was identified by the railroad as a priority crossing for them. My recommendation remains that the council approve the ordinance or adopt the ordinance, and we move forward with the permitting process, recognizing that the crossing will not be closed until such time as the new crossing is opened on our property. I'm happy to respond to any additional questions that you may have at this time.
Any additional question?
At such time, such time that it is, would ultimately be closed, at whose expense is the closure? Who covers the cost of the closure? And I'm not certain, Mr. Short. I believe the railroad.
I can help you out with that, Mr. Hamp. Actually, that's been the negotiation we've had with VDOT is that at this point, we've asked that it would be included in the Southern Corridor cost of the Southern Corridor generally. And so if not, then the, what's involved in the closure is that basically you pull up the asphalt to the approach of the rail itself and the, and would install guardrails on either side of the rail on Seventh Street, east and, and west of the rail. So the closure itself is really a fairly small expenditure. And I don't know that it would be an exaggeration to say that the permitting for the crossing is probably as expensive, if not more expensive, than the physical closure of the, of the site. But what VDOT has proposed to the railroad is, as I've said, a fairly inexpensive intervention.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. We voted, we had a introduction and a second at our last meeting on October 14th. We'll take a vote now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Mr. Short, nay. Okay. This brings us to item number eight. And well, item number eight, we've tabled for our November 9th meeting. So we'll move on to item number nine. Item number nine is to receive an update regarding CARES Act expenditures and allocations from Mr. McCormick, our finance director. Mr. McCormick?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As part of your agenda this evening, we have included an update of CARES Act expenditures as of October 21st, 2020. To date, the city has received $3,948,760 of funding from the Coronavirus Relief Fund. These funds were given to the city in two appropriations from the state of Virginia and are sourced from federal funds. We have broken expenditures out into broad categories that are similar to the eligible expenditure guidance available to us from the Department of the Treasury and the Office of the Inspector General. A few items to note are as follows. The first item on the list, substantially dedicated public safety salaries represent public safety personnel already budgeted for by the city of Waynesboro. Since we last discussed the Coronavirus Relief Fund, updated guidance has been issued that make clear state and local government may substantially dedicate portions of their public health and public safety salaries. For the city of Waynesboro, these salaries- For the city of Waynesboro, these salaries include police officers, firefighters, and those who directly support such employees, such as dispatchers and supervisory personnel. Identifying these expenditures as eligible will cause these dollars to fall into the city's general fund balance. The second item is Waynesboro Public Schools Assistance. Waynesboro Public Schools has incurred costs and incurred numerous costs related to online education and PPE. This transfer would cover many of these costs and can be done via ordinance prior to the end of the calendar year and would be effective for budget year 2021. The economic development line includes both the first and second round of the small business relief as well as the grants for nonprofits. The temporary housing for homeless are funds the city is sending by the Community Services Board to assist them with the Waynesboro homeless population from August until December, or to assist the Waynesboro homeless population from August until December. The Social Services Rent Utility Assistance Program is the Waynesboro CARES program that was set up through the Shenandoah Valley Department of Social Services. As of October 16, 2020, Social Services had approved 149 applications in the amount of $88,705. Also of note, in the other line, it includes things like purchase order for a portable court reporter, so that if the courts have to be moved for social distancing purposes, they can accommodate court reporting. There's a Miller Storage Building to accommodate social distancing when folks are checking in at the police department. And then there's lodging for the fire engine crew, and that makes up the majority of the $49,000 in that line. If you guys have any questions or if council has any question about any of the lines discussed or any of the other groupings, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Any members have a question for Mr. McCormick? Thank you, sir. That was for our information. We're not voting or anything on that tonight.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item number 10. That's to consider reappointing Mr. John Matherley to the Blue Ridge Community College Board for a four-year term ending June 30, 2025. Mr. Hamp?
I think you stated it sufficiently, so move on.
Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Matherley?
So moved.
Thank you, Terry, Mr. Short. Do we have a second? Second. Thank you, Dr. Hostoder. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And that brings us to communications, correspondence, and calendar.
Yes, sir. I wanted to revisit one of the items I shared during the work session regarding my intention to enter into several leases related to COVID response. The first being a lease to provide temporary quarters for the assessor to create additional space. I think it's commonly known that space in the Gorsuch Courthouse or the Gorsuch Building generally is at a premium, and I think that we've reached a point where some immediate, albeit temporary, improvement needs to occur there. And so I'm looking at a couple of opportunities to establish temporary leases for benefit of the assessor. Actually, it doesn't benefit the assessor, it benefits the assessor's neighbors in the building.
Correct.
And then the other lease being for the Waynesboro Fire Department. The council is probably aware that we've, in an effort to separate the shift to mitigate the risk or reduce the risk of should a firefighter or an employee become infected or become a carrier of COVID, that we don't spread that unnecessarily through the shift and through the department. We've actually been operating with a temporary second station or a split station, as we've commonly referred to, intend to, again, on a temporary but emergency measure, set up an enduring but temporary solution for that in the coming weeks. And then those solutions, the appropriations required for those solutions will be within the work that Mr. McCormick described coming to you in November, and we'll receive detailed explanation at that time, for information purposes. And I don't have anything other than that this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. All right, that brings us to item number 12, and that's going to be for the citizen comment period. I'll repeat the number one more time. The phone number, if you want to participate by telephone, is 844-844-9200. When prompted, you'll enter the code 398145, followed by the pound sign. You will hear the prompt for question and answer has started. Press the star six. You will hear if you'd like to speak, press one. At that point, press one, then you'll be put in queue, and when prompted by the moderator, go ahead and speak. Do we have anybody that signed up tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Do we have anybody on the phone?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. That brings us to item number 13. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? I'll make that. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. This meeting's adjourned.